...conduct its homeless count required by the federal government in order to get more homeless services funding. The goal is to have volunteers go to every part of our region to speak to the homeless and see what and where the need is. Anna Marcos takes a look at the count in one San Pedro neighborhood.
Councilmember Joe Buscagino joins volunteers, the LAPD, and LA Homeless Services Authority workers as they comb the streets of San Pedro looking for homeless residents. Every two years, the city of LA is mandated by the US government to conduct a census count of its homeless population.
Do you have kids?
I don't.
With those numbers, of course, we're gonna know how much resources that we need, and also know, you know, the dollars that we're gonna look for in the state, federal, local level.
Thousands of volunteers work all night for three nights, looking in LA's darkest corners to get as accurate a homeless count as possible. So what do they look for?
Another thing we're looking for is cars and vans. That's considered homeless as well. Vehicles, tents, makeshift shelters, you just mark it there.
We are very passionate about helping homeless veterans and homeless veteran families.
Just wanna see how many people we have here if we're getting a count, okay?
The LAPD and the Homeless Services Authority response team are there to provide any services needed, such as in the case of an underage girl. Authorities find out the underage girl actually has a real home.
She does have a home, and she has a father that has full custody of her. However, she does have a mother that lives out in the streets, so we gotta take her home.
The count helps authorities keep up to date with the changing demographics of who is homeless and why, but it also keeps homeless dollars coming in to help get more people off the streets. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
According to the LA Homeless Services Authority, there are more than 39,000 homeless on the street in LA County on any given night. The Los Angeles Police Department and the black community continue to repair trust in the aftermath of the officer-involved shooting death of Azelle Ford, and one way to do so is by opening lines of dialogue. Yana Kay takes us to yet another recent public meeting where officers and residents met face to face.
I look forward to hearing your thoughts so we can work together to continue to build our trust and transparency between the community and the police department.
LAPD police officers take turns introducing themselves during a community town hall meeting put on by the San Fernando Valley Chapter of the NAACP. The goal of the gathering, which took place at the Greater Community Missionary Baptist Church in Pacoima, was for the community to connect with the police department and talk about how to resolve issues that exist between the police and the black community.
That's part of the LAPD's efforts to dialogue with all different types of individuals that live in the city of Los Angeles, so we could find out what issues and concerns they have about the level of service that they're receiving.
Theo Gales of the NAACP says one of those issues is that the community feels some officer-involved shootings of black men are not handled properly by the police. But at the same time, he says a lot of problems would be eliminated if individuals who do get stopped by officers understand the protocol of the process.
Our young people need to be taught at a young age the procedures to follow once they're pulled over by a police officer. It's no time for them to get out of their cars and go to ask them questions, but to put themselves in the receiving mood. In other words, respond to the orders given by the person who's in authority.
LAPD Chief Charlie Beck was scheduled to attend, but he was not there when the meeting took place. Police officials and community members hope an open line of communication will help improve relations and save lives. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week. While shootings grab headlines, the relationships and trust being built between officers and residents don't often get reported, but that all changed recently when a married LAPD couple grabbed the attention of the White House for the work they're doing to reduce crime in some of LA's toughest neighborhoods through youth sports. Gil Reyes reports.
I'd never been this ecstatic about representing the department.
LAPD Sergeant Imada Tingarides and her husband Captain Philip Tingarides describing their incredible whirlwind visit to Washington DC. They were honored guests of President Barack Obama and First Lady Michelle Obama.
The first thing she said was, "I am so impressed with the work that you're doing in Watts." We walked into the room, she started talking about our Watts Bears football program. She had mentioned that we were doing policing right in the Los Angeles Police Department.
The Watts Bears football program is part of the community policing formula that's helped reduce violent crime in South LA by half. LAPD officers coach kids from low-income housing projects, but they're also nurturing the children and building relationships with their families. The HBO program Real Sports with Bryant Gumbel profiled the team late last year, and Mrs. Obama was watching.
And I think we've made more progress in 2014 towards reducing crime and had one of the lowest numbers of actual homicide incidents in Watts than's been seen in decades.
Captain Tingarides led the outreach through the Community Safety Partnership Program. In recognition, the First Lady invited him to sit with her group during the President's State of the Union speech in January. That's Captain Tingarides on the left of your screen with other esteemed guests of Mrs. Obama, including astronaut Scott Kelly. Captain Tingarides now wants to focus the partnership program on the Vermont Knolls area of South LA where gang activity has increased recently. The strategy, expected to be more of the same, fewer arrests and more relationship building.
The main point in that is getting the right officers with the right demeanor, the right attitude to go in and work.
To duplicate the success in Watts. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
And in this week in tweets, Captain Philip Tingarides and Sergeant Imada Tingarides received quite a bit of congratulations via Twitter. LAPD Chief Charlie Beck tweeted a photo of the smiling couple with the caption, "LAPD is proud of Captain Tingarides and Sergeant Tingarides." Attorney General Kamala Harris tweeted, "LAPD's Captain Tingarides represents the best of California law enforcement. His presence at the State of the Union is a tribute to all of those who serve." Meanwhile, LAPD Southeast tweeted this photo of Captain Tingarides, which says, "Presenting Captain Tingarides with his first official Commander Tingarides desk nameplate." That's because Captain Tingarides is leaving the Southeast Division after being promoted to Commander of the South Bureau, which oversees a population of roughly 640,000. The Bureau's coverage area includes USC, Watts, and the Harbor Gateway neighborhoods. From faded paint to revitalized art, a mural in a Boyle Heights housing project comes back to life, giving the community renewed religious inspiration. Anna Marcos takes us to the unveiling.
The Virgin of Guadalupe, symbol of hope, social justice, freedom, and community action, is something of a patron saint in Ramona Gardens, which is why the unveiling of her mural in the Boyle Heights housing project makes for such a big celebration.
(Singing) "Pañanitas que canta el rey de la vida." This is very special for us. This is a tradition for our community.
It's really a promise fulfilled. Ramona Gardens community, particularly the seniors, had requested from CD14 that this beautiful revered mural behind us, which we'll see in a little bit, La Virgen de Guadalupe, Virgin Mary mural, be restored.
Over the years, many of them have become faded. Some of them have graffiti, peeling paint, and it's just very important to restore them to their original beauty.
The mural was first created in the 70s and redesigned in the 90s, but had become dilapidated. Some $10,000 in a city funding source for murals, as well as funding from the Housing Authority of the city of LA, made it possible to train area youth to help the lead muralist finish the project.
It has a deep meaning because of the cultural significance in the Mexican culture, not just Mexico, but Central America and different places of the world where people worship the image of the Mother of Christ.
The Ramona Gardens community is no stranger to street artists. Murals of all kinds grace the walls of its buildings, and now, the Virgin provides one more wall mural to look over the residents. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
There's a shift going on in Los Angeles. City leaders are taking a proactive approach and making sure LA is prepared for the next big earthquake. Yana Kay reports. LADWP crews are installing brand-new earthquake-resistant pipes along the streets near the Northridge Hospital, nearly two decades after the devastating 1994 Northridge earthquake. The new pipes are part of a $10 million LADWP pilot project to protect the area's water supply when the next big earthquake strikes.
We're not only serving the critical facilities and transporting water in the future around the entire network that would be built as earthquake-resistant, but we're making it much closer and much easier to restore by reducing the amount of problems that we will have.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says these new Kubota pipes, which are made in Japan, have more space at the joints, allowing extra room for the parts to move, unlike traditional iron pipes that crack when the earth moves around them.
But these pipes here, they flex, moving in sync with the ground as it buckles and bends.
Officials say that even though these pipes are more expensive than regular pipes, they're already used in Japan and have been proven effective during major earthquakes there. Officials hope they can have the same impact here.
The reasons for these efforts is to provide safe and reliable water and sustain life and firefighting efforts here in our water system.
The pipes are part of Garcetti's earthquake resilience plan that aims to improve infrastructure in the city so that Los Angeles is able to withstand and provide services after the next big shaker.
We are very appreciative of the fact that we are recognized as an important community asset, and we will continue to serve this community.
This year, LADWP plans to expand this pilot program to downtown, the Harbor, and West LA. This project is expected to be completed in December. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week. The Northridge Hospital repiping is the second seismic safety project being undertaken by LADWP. The first was completed in Sherman Oaks in 2013. It's a gem of an LA landmark, and now the Southwest Museum will shine even more brightly. A new historic designation will now ensure its future and hopefully also bring in more funds. Anna Marcos has more.
LA's oldest museum has long been considered a local treasure, but now the 100-year-old Autry Southwest Museum in Mount Washington has made the national ranks. The National Trust for Historic Preservation just named it a national treasure.
It is both a national icon because of its story and its architecture and its collection, but also the work that we do here, we know will have implications for other sites like this across the country.
It is a highly significant native collection, which is very important to me, as important to the heritage of this area.
The exhibits give us a glimpse into a part of California history that many of us aren't even aware of, but this museum also keeps pace with the present, offering lectures and special events, taking part in community festivals, and even opening up its community garden to the public every Saturday.
We have long held a belief that the Southwest Museum is a treasure to this community and Los Angeles.
The new national treasure designation will give the financially-strapped museum more options in getting funding, and the Trust will provide ideas for how the museum can expand and reinvent itself.
I want the site protected for the future. That's what I want. And I want it protected in a financially sustainable way.
The Southwest Museum is part of the Autry National Center, which also runs the Autry National Center of the American West at Griffith Park. For more information, you can visit www.deautry.org. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The National Trust will also be launching a new website to serve as a forum for the public to share ideas and suggestions on the future of the museum. The popular La Brea Bakery is known for its artisan breads and loaves, and now the company is stepping up production and helping to boost the local economy in the San Fernando Valley. Yana Kay explains. Fresh out of the oven, these artisan buns are making their way to packaging on a new conveyor belt. In fact, this Van Nuys factory was just recently opened as part of expansion plans by the La Brea Bakery, which is part of the Arista Global Food Company.
This was really the heart and the soul of La Brea. It was raised here, and you know, it started here in Los Angeles, and this was the first really automated bakery that we had in our system. And what we wanted to do is to expand here.
City and company officials held a ribbon-cutting to welcome the expanded facility to the neighborhood. La Brea Bakery, which began operations here in the San Fernando Valley in 1998, has an existing factory at this location, but the new 66,000-square-foot addition brings the total to 130,000 square feet.
Ooh, it's so warm. Now, thanks to this expansion, the company will now be able to produce and ship an additional 4,500 cases of fresh bread a day throughout locations in the western United States.
The bigger factory also means significant investment and more jobs in the community. So far, the factory has hired more than 100 employees to work. Expansion efforts were supported by Council District 6.
So the good news is, is that we're expanding in Van Nuys, in the district, in Los Angeles, and taking care of and employing the people of LA.
City officials say supporting local businesses' expansion efforts is a win-win for both residents and Los Angeles. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week. La Brea Bakery plans further expansions in the San Fernando Valley later this year. And creating more jobs is also on the minds of those in the Watts community. A new kind of city workforce center has just opened there, and it's ready to provide residents with job training, career management, and a future. Anna Marcos takes us to the groundbreaking.
It's the first of its kind in the nation. The new Watts-Los Angeles Worksource Center in Imperial Courts will be the first full-service workforce site inside a public housing project.
Yes, we as a family are gonna make mistakes, but we gotta fall and keep on going. Doors are being opened as we see when we cut this ribbon.
Supporters are counting on the site bringing hope and jobs to a community in dire need of economic opportunities.
Workforce investment is vital to the reduction of welfare dependence and towards revitalization of the economy.
We have a problem here. We have a skills gap, so we need to close the skills gap so that everybody has the opportunity to get out there and compete for these new jobs in healthcare, in biotechnology, in hospitality.
Steve Brown is one of the lucky ones here. He took advantage of training and career guidance at a workforce center in another location, and he can now provide for his family with a construction job he landed.
We ain't got no example to what to be. All we see, all we be is, see is people shooting and selling drugs, and I don't know, it doesn't make no sense. We gotta make the community better, but no one sees that. And the Worksource Center helped me out by guiding me towards a positive direction.
I'm happy to be here to celebrate an opportunity of hope, an opportunity of empowerment, an opportunity of inspiration.
The center aims to do more than just pave the way to a minimum wage paycheck. Many of the applicants here will get a chance at a job with a living wage and a future. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Watts-Los Angeles Worksource Center is one of 17 full-service centers in LA. It's expected to help more than 13,000 job applicants in the next five years. Holocaust Remembrance Day, the tussle over who will manage the Greek Theater, and improvements to a South LA skate park, these stories in City Beat. Councilmember Paul Coretts joined Holocaust survivors and community leaders at the intersection of Fairfax and Beverly to observe International Holocaust Remembrance Day on January 27. The intersection is home to the statue of Raoul Wallenberg, who helped save over 100,000 people from the Holocaust.
We also have had this statue since 1988, but never really had anyone responsible for maintaining it, and so at times it's fallen into disrepair. Today, a group called Parents, Teachers, and Students in Action has agreed to perpetual maintenance of this statue, so that also makes this a great day.
On Holocaust Remembrance Day, the United Nations urges every country to honor victims of the Nazi era. Management of the Greek Theater at Griffith Park may not change hands after all, at least not without a vote by the full city council. Back in October, the city's Recreation and Parks Commission recommended turning management of the Greek Theater from the venue's current operator, Nederlander, over to Live Nation. But in a major victory for Nederlander, a city council committee has rejected that recommendation. Those in support of the current management company rallied in front of City Hall prior to the committee meeting.
That over 30,000 members of our community have signed onto a petition supporting Nederlander EEG. They've operated the Greek Theater for the last 39 years. They've done a very good job operating the Greek Theater the last 39 years. They have worked very well with our communities.
The issue now goes before the full city council. In addition to the Greek Theater, Nederlander also operates the Pantages Theater. Live Nation's venues in Los Angeles include the Wiltern and the Hollywood Palladium. Councilman Curran Price, Deere Deck Foundation, and California Endowment recently rededicated the state-of-the-art Skate Plaza at the Gilbert Lindsay Park in South LA. Part of the $330,000 for the renovation came from a grant from the California Endowment donated by Deere Deck's Foundation. Councilmember Curran Price then matched and exceeded the grant with a contribution of $170,000 to complete the cost for the needed renovation. The 10,000-square-foot Skate Plaza features handrails, stairs, gaps, ledges, and more. Residents of El Sereno celebrated improvements to one of their local parks with a weekend barbecue, and it's just that kind of community spirit city leaders say an improved park is designed to foster. Burgers on the grill, kids getting their face painted, families enjoying some quality time around the picnic table. It's all to celebrate the extensive makeover at LaGuardia Park, also called El Sereno North Park. And the community came out in droves to mark the big day as music filled the air.
It's a small park here, a local park, that is maybe the only park for quite a ways, and so it really gets a lot of use by the local El Sereno neighborhood. And over the last several years, we've spent over $200,000 bringing improvements that the community has asked us for, a new playground, fitness equipment. We're gonna be resurfacing the basketball court, re-sodding the soccer field, which gets so much use. And on top of that, we've trimmed the trees and improved, replaced all of the sidewalks surrounding the entire park.
The new fitness zone featuring exercise equipment, like ones you see in a gym, is a big draw, not just at LaGuardia Park, but at facilities throughout the city.
2010, we had about four throughout the city. Now we have about 60 of them, and about seven or eight are in CD14. People are allowed to come out here with their kids and do some exercise while their kids have some fun in the play area, play basketball, or just enjoy the park.
If there was just one complaint about the makeover, it was the timing.
I would've liked to have seen it done during the summer so that more families could come out and enjoy them, but hopefully now that they're here, it'll be a plus.
But all in all, residents only have good things to say about what the changes will mean for the neighborhood.
Hopefully, it improves community outings, more families coming out here, enjoying the park, and more family-oriented.
LaGuardia Park is located at 4400 Garden Homes Avenue. In this week's list of things to do, an exhibit on Stevie Ray Vaughan, a flower arrangement workshop, and a movie screening aboard the USS Iowa. LA Harbor International Film Festival invites you aboard the USS Iowa battleship for the free screening of the 1995 HBO film, The Tuskegee Airmen, on Sunday, February 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The historical drama is about the first African-American pilots in the US military in World War II known as the Tuskegee Airmen. The soldiers endured harassment and prejudice until they proved themselves in combat. The film will be screened aboard the battleship Iowa, Al Fresco, on the aft fantail deck. The ship is located at the Port of LA at 250 South Harbor Boulevard in San Pedro. Retired Lieutenant Colonel Robert Friend, one of the last surviving Tuskegee Airmen, will address the group and participate in a brief Q and A. Go to PacificBattleship.com for details. The Grammy Museum unveiled Pride and Joy, the Texas Blues of Stevie Ray Vaughan, last summer, but there's still time to catch it. Located on the museum's fourth floor, this one-of-a-kind exhibit offers visitors an in-depth look at the iconic career of the legendary bluesman. Jimmy Vaughn, Stevie's brother, served as a guest curator and provided the museum with many of Stevie's personal, never-before-seen items, including early family photos, original stage outfits, handwritten lyrics, and much more. The Grammy Museum is located at 800 West Olympic Boulevard. The exhibit will be on display through July of this year. For museum hours and other information, go to GrammyMuseum.org. One of the art district's most popular stores, Poketo, not only stocks unique, often one-of-a-kind gifts and home decor items, it also holds workshops like its Floral Workshop on Sunday, February 8th, led by Greta Pekter of Glasswing Floral. Greta will lead work shoppers in creating the ideal flower arrangement, a perfect combination of color and balance, as well as in crafting everyone's favorite accessory, flower crowns. Greta can be credited for the stunning floral arrangements at downtown LA's Ace Hotel, and her list of clients goes on to include Los Angeles Magazine and Bravo TV. The class will be held at the Poketo flagship store at 820 East Third Street in the arts district downtown. Go to Poketo.com for the cost of the workshop and other details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. They say silence is golden, but when it comes to watching a movie, sound is key, and the man who developed breakthrough sound innovations received a special posthumous honor. Yana Kay reports. If you're a movie lover, you've no doubt experienced the incredible sound of Dolby Audio. The late Ray Dolby, the man who made it all possible, was honored by his friends and family with a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame.
We're very excited about this, and especially since my husband isn't around anymore, so at least we have something to go to.
Ray Dolby, who died in 2013 at the age of 80, is recognized around the world for pioneering groundbreaking audio technologies which transformed the movie-going experience.
Well, the Dolby sound changed film. It got rid of the hissing sounds, and it's been used since the early 90s.
Through his company Dolby Laboratories, he was able to produce cleaner, crisper sound, as heard in Steven Spielberg's movie Close Encounters of the Third Kind and countless others. The people who knew him say Ray did what he loved, which was inventing and thinking about the future.
And as a result of that, he has literally transformed the entertainment experience on this planet.
Hollywood producer Francis Ford Coppola came to honor Dolby for his vision and the impact he had on the film industry.
I have this personal connection with a man who is, to me, a hero because he was an inventor, and I've always, I've always been enchanted by the stories of inventors.
His memory lives on, and through the granddaughters who are here today, and it's an honor for them to know that their grandpa was a very special person.
Now, Ray Dolby's star is conveniently located right in front of the iconic Dolby Theater here in Hollywood. Now, the star becomes the 2,540th star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I'm Yana Kay for LA this week.
Over the years, Dolby Laboratories has received 10 Academy Awards and 14 Emmy Awards. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Call Center's Police Department. What are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. Offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. Shh. Good morning. Today is Friday, February 6th. I want to welcome you to our Great Valley City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bond, and Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weisart, Coress, Corcoran, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, 11 members present on quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, Buscaino seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Coress moves, Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Oh, actually, Mr. President, before that, there's requests to continue items four and six to March 24th, and items seven, eight, and nine to February 10th.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Items one through five are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members, do you have specials? One through five. Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment or presentations.
Let's, let me check for one sec. Ms. Martinez, would you like to begin with a presentation? If everybody could give their attention to Ms. Martinez. Nury, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Get a little closer. Colleagues, I'd like to recognize Captain Ivan Minso upon his retirement from LAPD and welcome him to chambers this morning. Captain Minso has been a dedicated public servant for over 33 years and has been a member of the Valley family for decades. In 1981, Captain Minso joined LAPD, and since 2011, he has served the Valley as the commanding officer at the Van Nuys Area Division Station. In this capacity, Captain Minso has become a member of this community. Whether it was at a public event or during the community police advisory board meeting, local residents knew Captain Minso and felt comfortable working with him. I got to know the captain through these community members and my staff, and I have learned quickly that he was dedicated to serving our district. He has always been helpful to our office and the community and provided assistance whenever requested. But that's no surprise to his fellow police officers that know him and have worked with him as director president and now vice president of the Police Relief Association. At this opportunity to serve others, every opportunity he's gotten to serve others, Captain Minso has risen to the occasion, and today I'm so proud to celebrate him upon his retirement. So colleagues, please help me welcome Captain Ivan Minso, and I would also like to recognize his wife Lori, who's with us this morning. Thank you very much, Ms. Captain. Would you like to say a few words?
Captain, before you start, I'd like to recognize Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. We've revoked your retirement, so you're sorry to be the bearer of bad news. You know, I've had the pleasure of working with you, and I can't say enough great things in all your work at Devonshire and Topanga, Valley Traffic, I mean, so many things, Foothill that you've done for the San Fernando Valley. If you look at your career and what you've done, you've set the bar high. We have by far become the best police department in the country, without question. And it's because of legends like you and what you've done to set a shining example to the badge here in Los Angeles Police Department and community policing and getting out there in front. The relationships that you've built really set an example for all the ones that will come after you as well. And I wish you only the best to you and your family in many, many happy years of retirement. God bless you. Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Mr., uh, uh, Corcoran.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I rise to second Mr. Englander's revocation motion. Captain, I've kind of hoped that this day would not come, actually, although you've earned it certainly, and you deserve a wonderful retirement, and we wish you all well. But I'm really sad to see you not be here in the Valley, working with us after this, because you really have set a very high standard. Our captains of our police department have an extraordinarily challenging job, especially now with the constraints that you have on managing your divisions, with restrictions on your ability to deploy your folks, and yet at the same time, you have to maintain a high level of morale, you have to be a leader of your officers, and also reach out to the community and be the principal face of the division with all the members of the community. And different captains bring different approaches to that job, and it's a difficult one. But you have always done every element of that so well and so seemingly effortlessly to those of us who are on the outside, that it really has been a joy working with you. And I know even before you were in Van Nuys, when you were with Valley Traffic, I had so much opportunity to be able to work with you to try to keep pedestrians and bicyclists safer in the San Fernando Valley. And you took that task so personally, and you were so passionate about it, that everybody in the San Fernando Valley, and I think as Mr. Englander alluded, everybody in the city of Los Angeles owes you an incredible debt of gratitude for the work that you've done in keeping us safe, in leading your department, and inspiring the men and women who are standing with you, and so many others across the department and across the city. I really just wanted personally and very sincerely thank you for all the work that we've done together, all the work that you've done for this city, and wish you all the best in your retirement. Congratulations.
Guess what, Captain? It's okay. The mic is yours.
Go ahead, Mr. Labange.
Oh, wait, I didn't see.
Mr. Labange, let's get through.
This is a great police captain who leads great officers. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
See you in retirement.
The floor is yours, sir.
Well, it's a great honor to stand before this body, and most of you may not know this, but the city of Los Angeles is where I was born. This is my hometown. And I grew up here in the San Fernando Valley, as well as throughout our entire city. And it is the second biggest, but it's the best city, not only in our country, but in the world. You can do anything, be anything here in the city of L.A., and it is because of all of us working together as a team. I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Nury Martinez for her support, Councilman Corcoran, Councilman Englander, Councilman Labange, and all the fellow council for their support, guidance, and direction. It's been an honor to serve, and all I can say is thank you. But I have one small token of gratitude, because I've had the best mentor in the world, my wife of 35 years, Lori. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to present you a certificate of appreciation upon your retirement. Congratulations, and you will be missed. We look forward to seeing you. Enjoy your life after retirement. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield, are you ready to proceed?
Excuse me, Mr. President, we have a quick announcement. We want to introduce-
Go right ahead.
We want to introduce a new captain of Van Nuys-
Go right ahead.
Captain Minso.
Excuse me, sir, but it gives me great honor and pleasure to introduce Captain Andy Naimenez, the new patrol commanding officer at Van Nuys, who I leave in great hands. You're going to love this gentleman and this, to the people out here, he's a great guy.
Welcome, Captain. Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield, the floor is yours.
All come right on up here. Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. We're here today to celebrate the completion of a new project in Reseda, a project that, although limited in scope, goes a long way toward lifting the spirits of the surrounding community. It has been a unique collaboration between the community, represented by some of the folks here, and our city family as well, represented by some of the other folks behind me. It's the result of that years-long collaboration is a new and attractive center median along two-thirds of the mile down Sherman Way, right through Reseda's downtown. This would not have been possible without the tireless efforts of Revitalized Reseda and Nancy Sweeney. We talked about Nancy Sweeney some time ago because we lost her after a long battle with cancer this last year. But this milestone, in many ways, is a testament to her tenacity and the commitment of the Reseda community in making our neighborhoods the best that they can be. We're joined by, among others, Nancy's husband, Walt, who is not only her husband and partner in life, but had been a partner in many of this good work, Walt Sweeney. And the median project that we're talking about dates back to 2010. It's when the CRA was working with Revitalized Reseda, the Neighborhood Council, and others that they spearheaded the Reseda median refurbishment project. Notice to proceed was given back in 2011, but because of the dissolution of the CRA in July of 2011, that entire project, which the community was counting on, came to a grinding halt. But the good news at the time, and it was sort of good news, bad news, working with the community, the council office was able to get about $500,000 of discretionary funds to continue that effort for the medians that they so desperately wanted and we so desperately needed. Unfortunately, it got stuck for a while, but when I got to office, one of the things we first worked on was how do we get that unstuck, how do we work with the stakeholders? And the end result is really nice and positive in why we're here today. Because what was once a desolate and uninviting blight is now an attractive, inviting street feature through one of the- one of the valley's most important commercial corridors. The improvements that we're talking about include 15,500 square feet of new landscape planting, and automatic irrigation system, as well as 20 new median trees. All in all, we're talking about 10 median islands over more than two-thirds of a mile along Sherman Way from Etawanda to Krebs. It's an important stretch in the district, and it comes, this median improvement comes at a very auspicious time for Reseda, because Reseda is on the verge of a major revitalization. Last year, I toured with Mayor Garcetti around the very same stretch of Sherman Way, showed him the potential for the street if it was named one of L.A.'s great streets, and how the medians would play into all that, and he named it one of our great streets. And with new resources coming to Reseda from the CRA successor agencies, new parks set to break ground on the L.A. River, it is an exciting time and will continue to Reseda rising and rising and rising. And it starts with these medians. As I said, it couldn't have been possible without the collaboration of the community and city, and I have some certificates to honor some important stakeholders. So here today, we have representatives from Bureau of Street Services, and I have a certificate for the Bureau. I'd like to present to you. We'll do... And, Vic, do you want to say a few words? You don't have to, but you're welcome to. Please.
I'd be happy to.
And then...
Well, thank you very much, Councilman. I really just want to thank you for your leadership and support on this project and the community for all of their partnership, and especially their patience. And if I might just really quickly recognize our folks here, we have our team leaders on this project, Robert Gutierrez, who helped out with a lot of the design challenges and helped manage the project, Mr. Dennis Waugh, who helped with the irrigation and landscape construction work, leading our urban forestry division, and Patrick Singleton, who was the crew supervisor for all of the hardscape improvements. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have a great city team to make this possible. Let's give it up for the city team that did that. Robert Gutierrez, Patrick Singleton, Dennis Waugh. Now, they're joined by some of our community representatives, and I mentioned Nancy and Walt Sweeney. We're so grateful for their commitment, and I want to present Walt with this certificate for you, both for you and Nancy, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for your continued hard work and tireless commitment to the completion of the Sherman Way median. And also, I want to bring up Kevin Taylor, the Reseda Neighborhood Council. The Reseda Neighborhood Council has been an integral part of this. They have just been tireless as well in making this and the Reseda community really raise up. Kevin? I also want to mention that we have here Principal Mustafa Sahin, and they are right there, their school is right there along the way, and they have just been a great advocate for making this happen. And I also want to mention Jas Dillon, who is here. He's a 7-Eleven owner. He wanted to be here to show...
Welcome, sir.
His appreciation.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Let's give him a round of applause as well, and Mustafa, a round of applause. You know, they're both right there where the corridor makes a difference, and they have been, you know, community supporters, and they're really, the community is 100% behind this and is just thrilled to have this new amenity. So thank you all, and...
In fact, Mr. Bloomingfield, if I could call on the great councilman from the 4th District, Mr. Tom Labange.
Thank you. I wanted to rise to salute Mr. Bloomingfield and your community, the school, and the Bureau of Street Services. The Center Islands for many years were never loved or touched until people like yourself governed the community and pushed it, because it is on the last rung, you know, we're fighting to fix sidewalks, storm drains, trim trees, but the Islands, but the Islands are what welcome people to a community, and that great Sherman Way and its history now will have the love and affection that will make people want to come to the shops and everything. So great leadership, Bob. You're like that guy number 12 from New England, you know, you're down and out, but all of a sudden, the other guy's through an interception, and you picked it up, and man, good job.
No, we're doing running plays here. We're not trying to pass it.
All right. Good job, good job, good job.
But, you know, you mentioned the medians. It's really interesting, there was actually train tracks that they found along the medians, because there used to be the trains running down Sherman Way.
Well, it was, I was going to go a little bit more, but it was Pacific Electric Railroad. And anytime you see islands, whether it's out on San Vicente in Brentwood, the railroad ran there, Glen Oaks, et cetera, downtown, so there's a lot of history that is underneath there, and it's too bad we didn't keep those trains, because we would have the traffic problem, but better to have green than just the unattended thing. And Ron Olive, I just want to salute Ron Olive, who's one of the great ones of our city. He comes right up and gets a home run for everybody. Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Okay, at this time, and again, thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, at this time, members, we need to vote on reconsideration for item nine. Well, not reconsideration, we continue. It's still reconsideration. All right, so on item nine, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, I have cards on that item is now before us. I have Mr. Walsh, one card I cannot make out the name, and I have Mr. Previn.
Up here, you can't hide my face here at City Council in the valley.
Stay on the subject.
Okay, the issue here is the Grammy Awards. Now, we have, it is the most successful industry on the planet Earth. We are subsidizing the Grammy Awards. The Grammy, we are giving them, I'm told, that the amount of money that we spent on police and other fire department, everything we spend on the Grammy Awards equals $1,100,000 of city services, which we are negotiating the payment of $110,000. People are eating off the street right here, and I see people eating garbage in the city, and you give the record industry a million dollars into their pocket, into Suge Knight's pocket. That's where the money is going. That's why we're saying that, and you do it for the Academy Awards, and what do these people? Oh, they're unselfish up here. They're just giving, they're getting free tickets. I'm saying right now, show them, who is not getting a free ticket to the awards? It's free for you. It's costing us $1 million. Hand it over to the Grammys, so you can get your damn free tickets. You are disgusting, you are contemptible, and you are crooked, and you won't answer it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Labange.
Attorney, I was invited once to the Academy Awards. I paid $750, and I paid, and we all do pay if we do go, and I'm proud of the Grammy Museum, and I'm proud of the Grammys that are here this weekend, and I'm proud of the Academy Awards, and I stand up for the entertainment industry. And Mr. Walsh, sometime we could talk about movies. I could tell you a few movie houses, you could go in and maybe be entertained. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Maybe you should provide all of us with a list. Okay, on Mr. Previn, and then I have Donna Pierman and Miriam Fogler. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Council President Wesson, and thank you, Mr. Labange, for those nice words about the Grammys. I too am pleased that the Grammys have stayed in Los Angeles, and I'm very pleased about that. I agree, though, that $110,000 as the fee for the city services has obviously been negotiated, and I think that that's a careful balance, and I'm pleased that we've found a way to keep them here. And I realize that Staples Center is a group that, if I have it correct, is AEG. Now, AEG, who I know you all heard from quite recently, in fact, because if I'm not mistaken, there was that fascinating issue regarding the Greek Theater where we have AEG versus New Land.
Let's stay on the subject.
No, no, this is about AEG, sir, which I think Staples Center and AEG are synonymous, sir, with generosity, frankly. And the generosity, though, that they prefer is through the lobbyist team, and at one point, I was looking at some lobbyist numbers, not on this matter, but it was relevant, and I looked at an NBC Universal number that was robust, and I thought, wow, that's several hundred thousand dollars to one lobbyist in one quarter. Is that the biggest? And what I learned was, in fact, no. AEG had given 900 and something thousand dollars to lobbyists in one quarter, which was the, I don't know if it's a standing record, because I think, sir, it is fair to say that there is a lot of very, very effective lobbying going on. But from the perspective of the public who are concerned about the, well, for example, the sidewalks this week that came up, that we couldn't get $7 million out the door...
No, come on, Mr. Previn, on the subject.
Here I come, sir.
You just have to stay on the subject.
Here I come. Let's enjoy the Grammys, but let's also be very direct with the people about who we are working for, sir, and to continue all the items other than this today. Is this happening to the face of the valley residents? No, but we came down here to address items. You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do I have Donna Pierman? No, I could not read the card. So anyway, if that's you, go ahead.
So as many of you have heard by the two comments today, we're looking at the widespread waste and abuse by our elected officials to negotiate $110,000 for city services that you, the taxpayers, you, the taxpayers, and no one in the city of Los Angeles agrees with. AEG misuse its opportunity, so let them spend out of their own profits for these Grammy Awards at the Staples Center. This is the widespread waste and abuse by our elected officials, and you children listening, Batman wants you to know that when AEG built Staples Center, it was built in your interest so that you could attend the events. I don't see anywhere on this publication that there were some freebie tickets for our children in Los Angeles. All you Angelinos! But incidentally, as I widen down to conclude, the Attorney General needs to look into the abuse and the deficiencies of widespread corruption by unreasonable cause to use taxpayers' monies to fund any of these individuals here to a special event, such as Mr. Labange, who claims he paid, but it's only him claiming. Show me a receipt, and I will take your honor on that, Mr. Labange, but so far, I believe that elected officials are flagrant, abusive, and subjecting all you constituents, all of you here today, by the deficiencies, inappropriateness, to say that Staples Center is a welcome event when you see homeless people kicked off a federal state funded that paid for those sidewalks and streets, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Pierman, Mr. Kocorian, maybe you can translate that for me a little later. Okay, Ms. Donna Pierman.
This is Donna Pierman. Yeah, I'm totally against this Grammys, because it seems to me that we're paying $110,000 so that people who are rather wealthy could spend this $750 ticket or more to be able to go see the Grammys, so it doesn't seem like it's benefiting really Los Angeles anyway, other than the wealthy people who say, hey, we have the Grammys here, fantastic, so people can go out there and wear all those beautiful gowns and tuxedos and stuff like that. That doesn't do anything on helping Los Angeles. It has nothing to do with really helping the valley, by the way. I really don't see you come over here in the valley and you make it sound like you're doing fantastic things for the valley, and I don't really believe they're doing it, because they're shutting down video conferencing.
Stay on the subject.
I don't think it's fair that you shut down video conferencing.
No, now you're off the subject.
Yeah, I don't care. So...
Then that means if you stay off the subject.
And at the end of the subject is, I don't really think we need Grammys. I think it's a big waste of time, but then again, you love to do that. You love to waste money. You're constantly wasting money. I don't care about that these rich people get to go to their events. I think they shouldn't have the event, and I wish it was somewhere else.
Okay, Ms. Fogler.
This has been going on for a long time, and there are a lot of fraud, waste, and abuse, and this is part of the example that's going on here, here at the Staples Center with the Grammys, because they, $110,000 can go a long ways to open up video conferencing here and other essential services, like cleaning our streets and fixing our sidewalks. So folks, I don't know why these people can't pay the $110,000. So is there a question here as to why the elected officials, especially my representative, she can stand up and say no to this and say, and I'll send, Nuri, I'm voting for Nuri, that she should vote no on this matter, because $110,000 should come from them, not from us. Why are you people allowing it to happen? If you're representing us, then what's going on here? What's going on with our country? Why is Obama doing the right thing? He's not. He's ignoring what's going on out there, and it's going to come in and get us, just like it's coming here. You people don't care about the fiscal problem that we're having here. The $110,000 is big money. I mean, it's a drop in the bucket, but it's something here, and you shouldn't be wasting Why can't I have understanding here from you people who are representing us? I guess you don't. You represent yourselves. I think you should be paying it out of your own pockets if you can't come up with $110,000 from the people attending something here. I think they got the money to do it, and I think it's inexcusable, and I do not condone this.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, isn't this a payment being made to us?
Yes, it is.
So it's not like we are paying. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify that point. The Grammy Awards is the kind of event that cities across America try to get because of the economic benefit and impact that that has each time we have an event like this. This is a payment that the city is going to be receiving. We are not paying $110,000. We are receiving $110,000 for the city services that are related to that event, that very lucrative event that is going to produce significant revenues for our general fund because of the economic activity it's going to create.
Mr. Price.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I couldn't say it more eloquently than my colleague did. We're going to be receiving $110,000. We're not paying out $110. We're receiving it, just to clarify the record.
Thank you very much. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Ms. Martinez, would you, I think we have one last presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Friends, you all here? Great. Colleagues, just last month, communities across the nation recognized Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and today I'd like to recognize two organizations within my district that understand that human trafficking is a local issue. In the 6th District, sex trafficking is a personal issue. Children are brought through Los Angeles and into my neighborhoods, where they are trained, trafficked, and then forced to work as prostitutes, and so they can get help to escape the life. And while these children and victims suffer at the hands of johns and pimps, or as I call them, pedophiles, the local neighbors see the proof of the crime the next day. Condoms litter their yards, and fights break out between johns and pimps in the streets, and the community members feel helpless in their own homes. Growing up in the valley, I saw sex trafficking issues get worse and worse, and today, too many children are learning about these terrible crimes in their own front yards. But neighbors in my district know that we can do something about it, and they begin to organize. Residents in Van Nuys and some valley decided to take actions into their own hands. In Van Nuys, they formed groups against street prostitutes. In Van Nuys, they formed Groups Against Street Prostitution, also known as GASP, while residents in Sun Valley formed the Coalition Against Human Trafficking, or CATS, to address the issue. These organizations become local institutions and offered residents resources and a channel to speak to the local elected officials about this problem. So when I came into office, the first meetings were with these group leaders from GASP and CATS, and today, I'm so proud to welcome these groups to council. Founded and co-chaired by Jesse Torero and Cindy Sauer, CATS is fighting against human trafficking in the Lancashire corridor. Their members are active in many local organizations, including the Foothill Division CPAP. CATS is the main contact for the Sun Valley, East Valley community to report human trafficking cases. Between Jesse and Cindy's leadership and Maria and Lynn and John's dedication, CATS is going above and beyond to raise awareness and get rid of pimps and Johns and force them out of our neighborhoods. I'd like to invite Jesse Torero to share a few words about their work.
Jesse?
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. First off, I'd like to say until Nury Martinez came on the scene, nothing really happened. I've lived in Sun Valley for 53 of my 54 years. Grown up, raised, went to the schools, learned how to have a good time, got in trouble, the whole thing that every one of us here have been through in life. Over my lifetime, I've seen the area change and the San Fernando Valley, some good, some bad, but in all, it has changed. One of the changes that has taken place is an eventual change over 90 years, prostitution, human trafficking, sex trafficking, child abuse, and pimping has taken place in the San Fernando Valley along the Lancashire and San Fernando Road corridor due to the trucking when the road was first laid in the 1920s and the railroad yards were put in Sun Valley and Silmar and Pacoima. It goes back that far, so this is a long time coming. And I want to appreciate your efforts. Nury has been a leader in just a few short months, year, year and a half that she has been on the scene, she has tackled this issue. And I know you here in the council know that. Also, I'd like to thank our Los Angeles Police Department. The Foothill Division is absolutely the best. Captain Malinowski, previous Captain Hildner, and now our new captain, Captain Eskrich, and the fighting men and women in the Los Angeles Police Department. We couldn't do it without them because we can't arrest them. If I could, I would, but we can't. I appreciate them and their hard work, these men and women. They are our heroes. Most off, though, we decided to take it a little bit differently. I'm a real estate broker in the area, so I took it to the streets and knocked 20,000 doors in Sun Valley, Pacoima, and North Hollywood and Arlita, passing out a flyer saying, look, you have a problem. I do too. Let's solve it together. So we have eyes and ears and bodies everywhere looking at this, and that's what it takes to beat an issue that's almost 100 years old. I can't express my appreciation for Cindy Sauer, Michael Sauer, Mrs. Yapelli, Mrs. Mesa, and John from John's Toen, who's not here. These people are my heroes. They inspire me. You inspire me. Thank you very much. From the Coalition Against Human Trafficking, Prostitution, Pimping, Child Abuse, if you come to our area, you will get caught.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And similarly as GASP, GASP was also formed when longtime Van Nuys residents, Mr. and Mrs. Schultz, saw firsthand how Sepulveda had deteriorated. They began speaking with their neighbors and formed an informal group of four directors. Through their dedication, they decided to work with other groups that are looking to solve this issue in the area. Now, I'm so proud to introduce Dawn and Prudy and David and Lenny and Judith, who are working hand in hand with our office and other local law enforcement agencies to take back their neighborhoods. I'd like to introduce Mr. Schultz, and I'd like to invite him to the podium to say a few words about GASP.
Thank you very much, Nury. With me today are two of our directors, Prudy Schultz and David Rancal. Nury, in the 18 months you've been our city councilman, you've become our hero.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything Jesse said because it also applies to Van Nuys. But what we've seen in the last 18 months with your efforts with LAPD, the added patrols, the, what they call the P car, the prostitution car that cruises through our neighborhood, catches the Johns with girls in the car, all this has made a big difference. The street prostitution is not gone, but there's been a significant, significant drop in activity, and it's all because of your hard work in negotiating more patrols with LAPD. Frankly, Nury, had you been in office in the late 1990s and early 2000, if we had 15 Nury Martinez on the council, there would never have been a secession movement here in the Valley. Thank you, Nury.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kind words and thank you very much for being my heroes and the real fighters out in our communities to make sure we can take our neighborhoods back. Thank you very much, members. And that concludes our presentations. We have certificates for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's give them all another round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. All right, Madam Clerk, does that take us to general public comment?
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, he's my favorite time of the show. So we're going to go ahead and open it up for general public comment. Okay. Herman?
Reminder, sir, there's two minutes, but you placed us on one minute. But I want the Attorney General of the City of Los Angeles, for the record, to view the civil rights of Mr. Englander, who's running for his district.
You'll address the entire city council.
This is public comment. Do not interrupt me or be rude, sir.
Okay, stop your time. Stop his time. Shut off his microphone. I'm going to tell you right now, you will address the entire body as a whole or speak to matters that pertain to the city, and those are the rules. So follow the rules. Start this time again, please.
Mr. Speaker, this is general public comment, and by your action, so inappropriate, proves that you lack intelligence. And in the science of this world, I would never want to vote you back in for reelection in March. I'm not going to vote for Mr. Weezer in reelection in March.
Thank you, Candido.
I'm not going to vote for Mr. Kocorian for reelection in March because you know what? You don't deserve it. Batman knows that you morons are messing up our city with all your illegal action of corruption. So the abuse and waste will be figured out eventually by the FBI because you burned it down into you idiots. Good night, goodbye, Batman.
Thank you for your intelligent comments.
Hello, everyone. City Council, Mr. President, do everyone have one of these flyers? Yes, I was wondering, do you have one of these flyers?
Have they been circulated? Yes, they've been circulated. Yes, sir, they've been circulated.
Okay, I would like to address, first of all, my name is Herbert Thompson, PCYCC.org. I'm a crime victims advocate and I'm also an advocate against bullying here. We're not only just serving our communities, we serve the Los Angeles County. Therefore, right now, I'm asking, I've been doing this since 2012 without city support, without any funding. Today, I'm here and I'll be knocking on doors and I'm going to be asking, where is the funding to help us continue? We are a nonprofit organization that was established in 1977. Thank you.
Thank you. Candido.
Yes, sir, hold my time, sir.
Hold your time.
Mr. President, thank you. Candido Mayor is a proud, proud resident of the 12th district. Honored to have you as my councilman, sir. But see?
Honored to have you as a constituent.
You have spoiled me, Mr. President, Mr. Enger. I go to my district and I, trees are trimmed, my streets are cleaned, everything works well, and every time I turn around, there's something great happening in my district. I've had a 43-year love affair with the Van Nuys community, and when I sit here and hear that we've gotten rid of prostitution on Lancashire, but it's moved over to Sepulveda. And when we hear people that are from the Sepulveda area saying, it's great in our area, and yet there's more prostitutes on Sepulveda than there ever was. We heard Mr. Blumenfeld talk about a project on Sherman Way, just like Mr. Zine, you're doing a great job, sir, and you're going to be doing a cleanup there, you're going to be improving that area. We have a medium right down the street here that $125,000 was spent and nothing, never is it cleaned up. I can be a hypocrite and I can say all of you are doing a great job, but I can't say that. But Mr. Kocorian, you're doing fantastic, you and your staff, all of you who are running, and Mr. Bernard Parks, thank you, God bless you.
Thank you. And Candido, every district has its unique challenges, as do we, but thank you very much, sir. Thank you, thank you. If you're going to yell out from the audience, you'll be asked to leave. Don't do it again. Monica, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to have the clerk pass out this information to each one of the council members. We ask the LA City Council to please investigate the funding agreement authorized on October 8th, 2014, for Village Family Services to acquire 14926 Kittredge here in Van Nuys. The agreement states that LA County provided funding assistance for Village Family Services House Emergency Shelter Project for Transitional Age Youth. Yet, VFS has publicly denied that 14926 Kittredge is part of Transitional Age Youth Housing. The funding agreement is specific and must be adhered to. We also urge the council to establish an ordinance that limits the number of service centers and shelter to no more than five within a five-mile radius. Van Nuys has been pounded.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maryam Fogler. Her Dodgers LA shirt. Come on up.
Yeah, well, we should be having two minutes, not one minute. This is a declaration of war against us. Instead of having a war against the ones that are murdering innocents in back in the Middle East, they're, it's really bad. And then we have our police now with that rap music attacking the police. I think this is just very disparaging and very appalling. And it's a very bad tragedy that the first black man, first president, he should have been representing the black people, but he's not. He's not, he's a disgrace because he should be representing the whole nation. Would have been a great man, would have been a great leader, Obama, but he's disgracing us, not helping Jordan. He's not helping our allies. We have UAEs not bombing. We got a lot of problems in the Middle East and this is a real bad thing, people shouldn't be voting, should not be careful how you vote.
Kelly? Kelly Rose? Sorry, not here? Oh, there you are. Good morning. It's okay. Come on up.
I was figuring out my timing. Hi. Good morning. My name is Kelly Aldifer. I am here regarding Council File 140829, which is not on the agenda today, but is the high-speed rail. I'm a native Angelino, a parent, a homeowner, a business owner, and a little emotional, so excuse me. I own property in District 7, District 13, and work in both District 13 and District 14, and I am going to go over because this is a two-minute speech. I'm here to ask you for your support against the proposed high-speed rail east corridor routes, E1, E2, and E3. Currently, the High-Speed Rail Authority is looking into these proposed routes that would decimate the last middle-class equestrian neighborhood in Los Angeles. I'm reaching out to all of you because a project of this magnitude affects me in District 7 and will have an adverse effect on my participation in the other council districts. Sorry. Upon moving to Lakeview Terrace, we immediately immersed ourselves, I'm sorry, no. Instead of...
If you'd like, if you've got a written statement, you can go ahead and submit that as well or circulate it if you'd like.
Can you, I will walk away, but it would be really helpful to the community and your constituents who do vote if you put the fact that you've changed the public comment to one minute somewhere that people can access because it's created an issue and will continue to create an issue for people who...
Yes.
Constituent Andy.
Andy, you cannot, do not yell out from the council chambers, sir. You're going to be asked to leave if you do. You cannot yell out from the council chambers. You're disrupting the meeting. Ma'am, Councilmember Labonge wants to talk to you on the side of the ropes. He wants to give you the time and courtesy of doing that as well. The council rules, if you're disrupting the meeting by sitting down and flaring your hands, sir, we're going to ask you to step out of council chambers. It's very disruptive. If you want to speak, you can fill out a card. That'll be my final warning for those that are yelling out or disrupting the meeting. If you read the council rules for all of you, they do have, the rules are on there and are clear on how much time we allot for general public comment. We do have a number of what I will call frequent flyers that speak at every single meeting that do take up a number of the time. In fact, many of them speak far more than most of the council members speak in any given meeting, and they take up a lot of the public's time as well. And so if they want to not speak in the future, that's up to them and allow more time for the folks that want to come on very specific issues, I'm sure they would appreciate it as well. Mark Morris, please.
I wanted to thank the council and especially Mr. Enger for helping us out in the Granada Hills area with his emphasis to the LA County. Mr. Enger, I wanted to thank you for holding the county responsible for the Aliso Canyon fracking that is being proposed there, and thank you once again. I don't know whether you saw, you were mentioned in the San Fernando Valley Business Journal as an advocate. So I just wanted to go on record as a Granada Hills resident to say thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thanks for your continued support on that issue as well. I truly appreciate that. Chuck Tenon. Morning, Chuck.
Good morning. Good morning. When the mayor took office, he promised to open his door to meet with the people of LA. His scheduling staff failed. Following protocol, I was promised that my request would take 30 days. It's been one year and over 40 calls. I don't appreciate being treated like a second-rate citizen by the mayor's disrespectful staff that don't care and don't honor the mayor's promise. On another note, Councilman Tom Labonge is leaving office soon. He has contributed and supported a lot to this city and done a lot for its people. A caring and dedicated man. We'll miss him. But most importantly, there will never, ever be another Tom Labonge. And Tom, may God bless you always in everything you do. Give him a hand. Thank you.
That was very nice. Sharon Brewer. Good morning. Good to see you.
You might want to wait until after my comment. I want to speak on March, the March 3rd, 2015 ballot measure, Charter Amendment Number One. According to the official sample ballot pamphlet, it says that candidates elected in 2015 and 2017 will be elected for a term of five and a half years to align with terms with the new elections. The city council on November 7th voted 13 yes to put this on the ballot. Isn't there a direct conflict of interest for those five running in the March 5th, 2015 election who voted yes? It could impact the ones voting, the odd number ones that are elected in 2017, who wouldn't want to make sure they receive over $175,000 over extra 18 months in office? And if you want people to show up to vote, put on the ballot, reduce city council members' annual salary by 50%.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, I think you're incorrect. Your false statements, I don't take more than time in the end, council members, I'm not sure who you're speaking for. Anyway, we need the two minutes back. We need to vote for Vera Martinez. I think she's done a great job. Anyway, Obama's not keeping our country safe. Jordan takes care of their terrorists, but our country can't even say the word. Jordan takes care of their terrorists, but our country can't even say the word that Islamic terrorist. So we need to be able to keep our country safe. Obama's not doing anything for our country. He's not doing anything for the blacks. He's not doing anything to help our poor people over here. He's not doing anything for the veterans, and he's not doing anything to keep us safe from ISIS. They could come over there, they can complete the Obama's, and he would probably sit back and do nothing. In my opinion, he's abetting the enemy. He's a closet Islamic, and he's for them because he doesn't do anything to take--
Thank you, thank you.
John Walsh, Bobby in Hollywood Highlands, Jay Walsh Confidential, right here. This is what it looks like. Previous speaker didn't say what to do to stop you from changing your terms to five and a half years. Vote no on Amendments 1 and 2 in the next month. Vote no on-- It eliminates election day. It eliminates city election days. This is so they can get elected underneath the President of the United States in a ballot with 300 names on it. And I like to say, you like to, you enjoy correcting people. Okay, this is what I say. I say that the mayor and Glenn Dake have not filed with the Fair Political Practices Commission the fact that they have a spousal relationship that predates his marriage to his wife. Hollywood Highlands.
Thank you very much. Now you're disrupting the meeting. Okay, with that, before I go to the last two cards, before I go to the last two cards, I wanted to let everybody know the council rules for general public comment because a lot has been stated, and as you'll see for those folks that seldom show up, why it's been down to one minute. According to the council rules, and this is all online, as you asked, it's already been there for a long, long time, under the Brown Act, this is number eight, it says the council has determined that a reasonable amount of time for the general public comment shall be a cumulative total of up to 15 minutes. Now, with that, and it goes on, and you can continue reading that as well, we usually would allow and have allowed for at least two minutes. We can go three or four minutes under our discretion as well, up to 15 minutes cumulative. But as you'll see, a lot of the cards that people put in for public comment show up to every single council meeting and every single committee meeting. They're to the general public and required by law. We allow them, and they can speak to anything and often speak to anything and everything. And having said that, they take up the time that for other folks that rarely make it or has some significant issues, particularly when we're out here rarely in the San Fernando Valley and folks can come, and they don't have to come from that far, it takes up that time as well. And so it is unfortunate that that occurs. We would, I think, all of us collectively like to hear more from those particularly that aren't the ones that fill out items and sit through every single council meeting every single day. It's their right to do so, so I wanted to explain that. We, in fact, in public comment right now, we've exceeded the 15 minutes. We do have two cards left, and we're going to give both of them an opportunity as well, even though both of them come to every meeting and speak as well. Daniel, you're up. Wanted everybody to understand the rules.
That is a comprehensive lie. I haven't been here in two months, and this is the only item I've spoken on today--
Oh, you're right. No, not you. You're not, you don't fall in that category.
Thank you. I support Herb Wesson for reelection in CD 10. However, I support Herb Wesson, but I say no on Amendment 1 and no on Amendment 2. In the same way that limiting public input here at the podium, moving the elections to the fall instead of keeping them in the spring reduces public scrutiny. By keeping elections in the spring, we keep focus on these issues here. There is a disdain for public input, and let's not bury city elections. Move these cockamamie presentations to a Saturday and talk to your heart's content. Cindy Montanez for CD 6, Jay Bieber for CD 4, he helped us with the red light cameras, and that's just tragic. No on 1, no on 2, people, please, no on 1 and 2. Wesson for CD 10.
Great, thank you very much. And Eric, our final speaker. Eric, did you want to come up? I'm sorry? Preven, did you want to come up? Eric, is it not? Okay, start his clock. It's Eric, it says Eric.
My name is--
I can't read the writing on the last name, but it says Eric.
I would ask you to reset the clock so I can get 60 seconds.
I've been calling your name.
So you're not going to reset the clock so I can have 60 seconds?
Oh, I'll reset your clock, sure. Why not?
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
No, no--
Go ahead, reset his clock.
And this is a request that you not talk during my testimony.
Okay, thank you.
At all. Thank you. Okay, here we go, beginning. That's not 60 seconds, but you are, sir, contemptuous of the public, and you've made that very clear. My question has to do with Mr. Krikorian's using of the term "public necessity" in regard to an 8,900-square-foot parcel of land next to Sportsman's Lodge that was sold privately at below-market rates to an owner of that hotel rather than auctioned off to the public. Auctions earn the most money for public land, and that's what the city code requires. I adore the Sportsman's Lodge and would love to see it achieve cultural historical designation, but that doesn't mean it should be shoved to the front of the line past the rest of us. In fact, this one was held off the market. Look at Council File 081961 and Council File 140138-S1. And I ask you, sir, do you have any connection financially to Mr. Richard Weintraub, who is selling his Malibu property for $50 million? The LLC he used to acquire Sportsman's property in the firehouse was-- In fact, sir, I want you to let me finish because this is the kind of--
You're done. Your time is up. Thank you very much.
To speak on matters--
You can go ahead and shut off his mic. Thank you very much. Thank you. And with that, that concludes general public comment. Do we have any announcements, members? Mr. Labonge.
At 11:00 in the morning, we are going to be rededicating Amira's Garden. Amira was a wonderful hiker at Griffin Park passed several years ago, and it's right near the Wilson Harding Golf Course, and the public is invited to come and enjoy the park, rain or shine. And we hope we get a little light rain because it will help the beauty of the rain that has passed these several weeks.
You're here, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmembers, I have a special announcement I'd like you to all. Councilmembers, I'd like you to hear a special announcement as well. We have a public service this Monday at 11:30 for Rick Orlov in council chambers. So this Monday at 11:30 for Rick Orlov in the council chambers, and if you can make a note of that as well, if you're available to join, that would be great. And he was a phenomenal, phenomenal human being. So with that, let's go ahead and ask for adjourning motions. Do we have any adjourning motions, colleagues? We do have adjourning motion, so if we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions, we're asking everybody that is able to please rise. Bob?
Just a quick one. I got an email, a sad email while I was here. My old high school band instructor passed away. He had a very long and fruitful life. He was 89 years old, but he inspired me in many ways, not just to be a good trumpet player, but to be a really good person. He was one of those people that really went the extra mile, and he put up with all sorts of things when I was the band geek president, and I consolidated the presidency, including the jazz band, the marching band, the orchestra, as well as the general band. He put up with that, but he really was an inspirational and just a warm and wonderful human being. So I asked Joseph Albright that we adjourn his memory. Dr. Joseph Albright.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge.
I just want to say, Dr. Joseph Albright created a very honest man there, Mr. Blumenfeld. That's right, hit that note. Members, this is a tragedy of a car accident that took the life of Damon Freeman, who was very active in the La Brea Hancock Home and was associated as a board member, and he was also part of the Neighborhood Watch Program and was very intricate in our neighborhood engagement when we in our district talk about the zoning uses. He survived by his wife, Crystal. He truly was a great member of the community and will be sorely missed. Also, Belinda Leavita, who was born in Scotland but moved here to Los Angeles 30 years ago, passed away suddenly from a heart attack. She was 62 years old, too long, an active tettison hiker, a realtor for Cobalt Banker in the Hancock Park office, and a volunteer and raised her five children in Windsor Square. She's centered much of her life around the neighborhood. Much loved at the St. James Episcopal Church and her community. She survived by her five children, Ben, Melinda, Nick, Olivia, and Lucy. I ask we adjourn a member of Belinda Leavita. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Another tragedy that struck the Wilmington community that took the lives of two Banning High School students, brother and sister Lexi and Eli Garcia. Talk about a community in Wilmington, a faithful, strong community that came together in light of this tragedy, and it shocked the entire Banning High School family. They both tragically died in a car accident on Pacific Coast Highway, both in their late teens. We were able to partner with Sharefest, incredible foundation, and were able to raise $20,000 to give both Lexi and Eli an honorable burial, which will be held tomorrow at Green Hills Memorial Park in Rancho Palos Verdes. The services will be held at Banning's Landing Community Center tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., followed by the burial, and tonight will be the viewing at Green Hills Memorial Chapel from 5:00 p.m. till 7:00. These kids were just incredible, very active in the school community, just beloved by their peers. They're survived by their mother, Tonya, stepfather, Adrian, four siblings, and two grandparents. May Lexi and Eli Garcia rest in peace. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any others? Council has motions for posting and referral. We'll post and refer those. With that, we are adjourned. Have a nice weekend, be safe. Thank you.